Father, we ask that you guide these men and women, as they take the city's business, Father, that their decisions will be in the best interests of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or subtractions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Item number eight, one, needs to be removed from the agenda.
Okay. Item eight point one is to be removed? Is there anything else?
Removed.
Removed. There are no other changes? I'd like to get a vote.
I believe we should defer the regular meeting minutes for May fourteenth since they weren't in the package until next month.
All right. So we will remove item eight point one and we will defer item number four until the May fourteenth regular meeting minutes are available. Nothing further? All in favor? Aye. Item number three, we have citizens' comments.
Mr. Chairman, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell.
Can you give a motion in a second on that agenda?
Yes.
Okay, just a moment.
Item five are recommendations for May 2013. There are none. Item six are the bonds. Mr. Levorn?
All the bonds, six point one through six point four, the developers have been notified of those expiration dates. I've been in contact with Cowell's Creek developer. The six point three, they need to do some curb repairing. This was a section that was, put the final topping on last year, and they're actually going to be looking for that bond to be released. But I don't want to make a motion for that to happen right now until we get everything done, that we need to get done in that subdivision.
Jemichael? Jemichael?
Yes. I do want to ask that we follow the normal procedures for six point one, that we go ahead and ask for that bond to, for us to call that bond if it's not renewed by the expiration date.
So you'd like a motion and a vote?
Yes, for six point one.
Make a motion.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Six point two, they had a few items that needed to be addressed before we could do a final CO on the stuff in the end. Again, I've been told by the owners that those items should be taken care of within the next week or so. Once those items are corrected and we get Will to go out there to make the inspection, this bond needs to be released. I have the authority to release that bond without Planning Commission approval. Just want to give you all a heads up, if that happens, usually I like to ask for you all to release them. That way it gets me out of the middle of it, but the zoning does give me the authority to do that.
Would you want a motion contingent upon those items stated?
You can.
Make a motion of approval for release of the bond with the exception of the items stated, that the items stated be done for you to have that.
Okay.
Got a motion in a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And six point three and six point four, if you would just vote on those at the same time, that they follow the home procedures if they're not in place by the time that the expiration comes, that we can call those, with understanding that we may be coming back next month to ask for six point three to be released.
Do you want us to make a motion for you to call the bond upon expiration? Motion? To call the bond upon expiration.
We have a second? Second. All those in favor?
On expiration.
Oh, excuse me. All those in discussion?
I went over there the other day and looked at it, and those curves have been touched.
No, that has.
No.
It'll be marked, but they haven't been touched.
I talked to Marlon last week. He said they was going to try to get over there this week to fix the curves. And once he fixes the curves, then everything is in compliant and we can accept the roads at that time. So next month, if everything's completed, we'll be asking for that bond to be released.
If you'd like to get a vote, please, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Old Business, item seven point one, is the variance request from the subdivision regulations relative to the required signatures to vacate subdivision plats in reference to lot six of the Evergreen Industrial Park. I'd like to get our legal representative, Mr. Cantrell, to explain our ability and authority when it comes to variances, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This makes about the third time that this has been before the Planning Commission, once before the Board of Commissioners, and it may have been here more than that, but that's the ones I recall. I apologize to this board for asking, being one of the people that asked that it be sent back, because at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, there was a request made to that board for relief that that board is not empowered by statute to grant. And the main reason that I asked for it to come back here, and you've heard me say this many times, I'll never put myself in a position to speak for this board, would not ever attempt to do that. But the question was raised, and I don't think that anyone here was not aware of this, but the question was raised that there might be some confusion as to whether you, this Planning Commission has the authority to grant the relief that was requested, i.e. a variance from the signatures. Let me state to you without as clear as I can be, there are some things in legal parlance that you say I'm pretty sure of, there's some things you can almost say for 100 percent certainty. This Planning Commission absolutely has the authority to vary any provision of these subdivision regulations to the extent that you can amend them any way you want, you can take them out of existence if you want. Therefore, you have the authority to grant the variance that's requested. That's not to say that you should grant that variance. That's just to say that I wanted to be absolutely sure that no one was laboring under any misconception that this board with a majority vote has the authority to do that. I would caution you that when you do that, that you have weakened your subdivision regulations to the extent that the next time someone comes in and says, "Well, I've got all the signatures but two," or "I've got all the signatures but three," where do you draw the line? Now you have a definitive line. Once you start, once you change it, you have impliedly at least varied that provision in your regulations. If you do that, that's your option. I would suggest that you would come back and amend those because courts sometimes look at things and say, "Here's what you say you do, but here's what you actually do." That's a dangerous precedent. As many of you will realize, or will remember, I'm sorry, it's the wrong word, will remember, we have seen probably in the last couple of years, don't hold me to the exact number, several issues raised about a variance that was granted in the subdivision covenant restrictions relative to an asphalt plant. That was done in 2000, and I want to point that out for the purpose of illustrating to you that once something like that's done, if you waive, that covenant restriction was waived, it's waived for everybody. And once that's done, you're, this board now, some board in the future, is going to meet that, because once it was done, it's irreversible. I'm not saying that's your decision for you to make. If you want to do that, you can, but you're going to be impliedly changing your, the provisions of eleven point one on the 100 percent. Also, on one point one one, on the variances, if you did that variance for what's requested, you have to do it in accordance with the four things that are listed there, or you will be impliedly changing those also. The decision that you make is up to you. The primary reason that I wanted to address that issue was that I was partially responsible for this being back here, and I wanted to have it come before the people that has the authority to deal with it on finality basis, but also to explain to you so that, and have it on the record, so that no one is laboring under any misconception that this board does not have the authority to grant or to deal with the issues. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, we'd like to give you the opportunity to speak with us tonight about this subject so that your thoughts and opinions are certainly part of this record as well.
I do understand that this variance is a one-time occurrence. It does not change the 100 percent signatures required, and I feel that it does need to be approved since really I have 100 percent agreement from the landowners at Industrial Park. I have signed the form for a variance, I have paid the fee for a variance, so I think we're all on the same page, that a variance is possible. The regulation states that it has to be an extraordinary hardship and not against the general intent of the regulations. Just speaking to the hardship, I am 67 years old, and I bought this as a retirement property. And if, I sold my home of 20 years because I could not age in place there. If I can't build on this property, I don't have the means to get another property. So to me, it's an extreme hardship. I'm sorry. You have in your possession the written reasons for the four variance, things that need to be met, and I think three of them are met by the fact that two parts, two sides of my property are residential. So changing this property residential certainly is going to maintain a safe environment and not be injurious to any of the landowners in the industrial park. It is unique to my property because I am on the edge of the industrial park. And it certainly keeps the land development because this is in the growth plan, and again, because of the residential. The fourth stipulation is that it is a hardship to the owner and that it is not self-imposed. And I think that is where some difference has been quoted. The one person that would not sign this is the paving company, Mr. Derryberry, and he has told me, and I believe he's told members of the board, that he doesn't care what happens with lot six in industrial, the industrial park. He simply does not agree with the governmental process of asking him to sign. And I have Barry Sullivan, who recently talked to him and is willing to say the same thing. So that's why I say that I have 100 percent agreement, because Mr. Derryberry is not against this. I hope that you uphold the intent of the regulation tonight.
Thank you. So we need a motion tonight on the seven point one so we can open the floor for discussion.
For our approval?
We have a-
Second for discussion.
We have a motion for approval and a second for discussion.
Thank you for your heartfelt words, and we are listening and hearing your concerns. I've got a question. Is all of the property been annexed into the city of Fairview? Is the property annexed?
Well, the lot six is in the industrial park. It hasn't been-
So that's in, but you have other property that's county property?
There is other county property that does not have road access and does not have water access. There's no way to get water to it. Any power would have to go through the woods at the end of the Bowie Lake, which I don't think, I certainly would not want to do, and I don't think the city would want to do that.
But they're two different deeds.
There are two different properties. I cannot build on the county.
Okay. I thought so. I just needed clarification that there's two different deeds, and we're speaking about the deed that is currently annexed in the industrial and under city.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, we also would like to introduce the engineer's report and the staff comments into the records as well. I'll just pop in, and we'll read both of those.
As far as engineering report, there are no engineering comments. Now, as far as staff, I will read the section of variances, which is one dash one one two, and under that, one dash one one two point one, general. If the Planning Commission finds that extraordinary hardship or practical difficulties may result from strict compliance with these regulations, a variance from these regulations may be granted, provided such variances shall not have the effect of nullifying the general intent and purpose of these regulations and provide further that the Planning Commission shall not recommend variations unless it shall make findings based upon written evidence presented to it in each specific case that, one, granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or be injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood where the property is located. Two, conditions upon which the request for a variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other properties. And the staff's comment, the request is not unique to the property in question. This could be applied, this could be applied to any subdivision of property for which a person would like to vacate the property from the plat. The variance should not be issued based on this fact. Number three, because of the particular physical surroundings, shapes, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship, not self-imposed, to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. And the staff comment, and Miss Fagan purchased this property that she knew was not properly zoned for the use she intended. Most people purchase property contingent upon the property being rezoned to allow the intended use. This is not, this did not happen, so the hardship is self-imposed. This variance should not be issued based on this fact. Number four, the variance will not in any manner alter provisions of the land development plan, the major thoroughfare plan, or the zoning ordinance. The staff comments, to vacate lot six from the Evergreen Industrial Park is altering the land development plan. The proposed land use map has this area designated as industrial general. Vacating the plat would require the Planning Commission to amend the proposed land use map for this area. The variance should not be issued based on this fact. Last paragraph, where the Planning Commission concludes that the purpose of these regulations may be specifically served to an equal or greater extent by an alternative proposal, condition, or circumstances, it may approve other variations to these regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, at this time, we have a motion for approval of the variance. So all those in favor of the approval of the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Item seven point two thus is predetermined to by the vote of seven point one. Is that correct? Do you need a roll?
Yes, please.
Okay. I would like to get a roll, call, vote on that, please. Mr. Sutton?
Nay.
Mr. Beata?
Nay.
Mr. Benson?
Nay.
Mr. Beahan?
Nay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nay.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Totti?
Nay.
And I vote nay. So with seven point two being predetermined from seven point one's voting down of the motion, we'll go to New Business, item eight point two, the grading plan for the Walmart spoil site located at 2396 Fairview Boulevard, map forty-six, parcel eighty-two, 2.5 acres, Earl Lampley owner. Is there a representative of the owner here?
Yes, John DeWolff, representing Mr. Lampley.
Time I'd like to get a motion to start discussion.
Does that move?
Aye.
We have a motion in a second. I'd like to open the floor to discussion by starting with Mr. Benson and reading the engineer's report.
The engineer had three comments. Item eight point two, grading plan for the Walmart spoil site located at 2396 Fairview Boulevard, map forty-six, parcel eighty-two, 2.5 acres, Earl Lampley owner. Number one, please provide a vicinity map in order to determine where the proposed activities are taking place. Number two, is the proposed fill of three feet uniform across the fill area and following existing contours? Even if approximate, proposed contours will be shown on the plan. Number three, what will occur with the proposed burn pit upon completion of burning activities? That's the end of the engineer's report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeWolff, do you have some clarification and answers for the engineer's report?
Yes, the location plan obviously will be placed on the final plan to be submitted to the city.
Okay.
The question on the fill, it says up to three feet because the purpose of this site is only for any wet spoils that come out of Walmart, because there is an existing pond on the Walmart site that's having to be improved to become a stormwater management area. So some of the material being removed will be wet, and that's unsuitable for the fill on the property that we previously have brought to you guys. You don't want to put wet material on a fill that someday will have a, you know, large development on it. That's, that's not, you don't have any strength to it. So the idea is this site is strictly for wet material to dry out. There is no way to compute how much of the material will be wet based on the amount of rainfall, when the material's removed, the soil conditions. The maximum it would be would be three feet. The contractor knows that. But it's more likely it would be a foot, could even be less than that depending on exactly what comes out of that area, but it would be uniformly spread, you know, over that area. And if it does, does need to be the three foot, it would be three foot uniformly spread. That's why we didn't draw contours, because we have no clue on what the volume would be. We could easily show the maximum situation by drawing contours to that elevation if you would like us to do it.
Will that be on the final plot?
If you would like that to be there, it will be. It was in the, in the comments, so we'll just go ahead and show it that way. So that will be done. And then the final question, we'll add a note about the burn pit area where vegetation that's removed from the Walmart site is proposed to be placed into a pit excavated, I think we said, two or three feet deep. Once that burning is completed, then that area would also be filled and leveled off on the property. And we're adding note to that effect to address that comment from your engineer.
Okay. Just to clarify, from what I understood from the site plan that I saw, this is the piece of property from the original Walmart site that goes into the park and is basically a square piece of two, almost two and a half acres of jutting into the park property.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
If you'll see, it comes around by the perimeter trail, and Mr. Lampley's property moves into the park, and then the park surrounds this. And it's clearly denoted on the site plan that, for number one. Number two, we can get it as-built once the contours are correct-
Yes.
-and you have that figured out, because you don't know what you've got to come into. In terms of burning, when we first met, I thought that, and I may be going a little further back, but when Walmart clears vegetation, I was, I thought that I heard that they do not burn the removal of vegetation.
Walmart's requirements under their contract state that no burning can occur on the Walmart site.
Okay.
That's why this is an off-site location on the Lampley property where the contractor is going to place the material that can be burned.
But it is, it is material from the Walmart site that will be taken to this site to be, to be disposed of, to be burned. Who is in control of the standards and qualities of that burn site? Is that your responsibility, or is that Walmart's responsibility?
No, that would be the contractor's responsibility when that material leaves the Walmart site, and the contractor's responsible for meeting the requirements of the state fire marshal and then any additional requirements that the local fire marshal may have in terms of requirements for burning if it's permitted. I know there are times when the fire marshal limits burning because of weather conditions, so they would have to abide by all of the local requirements as well as the state fire marshal requirements for burning.
Okay. The, the final issue I have, and I'd like to open this up to discussion, is from my house, I can smell the exhaust from the equipment, and I can hear the equipment. What type of parameters are used in this type of a disposal operation in terms of air quality and basic odor control in your plan to be able to do that?
Okay.
How do, how do you want to approach that? Because it's coming into the summer months, this air's going to get still, and we could, you know, we do not want to have that type of issue in our city.
The equipment has to meet Department of Transportation standards in terms of the exhaust, if you're referring to the smell of the diesel exhaust coming out of that equipment?
Hmm. I don't have any problem with it, with that part of it. But when you start talking about the size of the burn pit at three, two to three feet deep, and the amount of material that you guys are going to start to dispose of, can you burn it hot enough so that you don't have the smoke?
I don't think it's reasonable. I don't think you could burn it hot enough to not have any smoke or odor. I'm not sure what would help manage that problem of some odor from burning. I think certainly anytime you have burning of leaves in a yard or anything, you have odor, and depending on the wind conditions, it's going to spread.
About the only thing you're going to be able to do is expedite the burn, come in a time period that's going to be exposed. As far as I've ever seen anybody do, you get it hot enough, quick enough.
Concentrate, burn it as hot as possible, as much as possible.
Eliminate time.
Put air tunnels in there and burn it.
Yeah.
Is that the plan, to put the air tunnels in and to be able to put the equipment in place, or is it just going to be a pretty much open burn?
Let me, I can, if that's a condition, then certainly the contract, that's a condition of this board, then let's include that in your motion, and then it will happen.
Would that be in a pre-con meeting? And you just need us to approve that, or do you want to add that in the motion?
Well, actually, on a site like this, that would be a requirement because of the-
Vicinity of the park and the-
Well, not really the vicinity of the park, but the amount and volume that they're going to be burning- going to be burning, they, they have to use these blowers so it burns quicker so they can get, you know, so they're not out there for months and months.
Is there any way we could tell how long it would, like how long this would be burning? I mean...
I could not answer that honestly. I could pull a number out of the air, but it's not going to be meaningful.
I guess another way to ask that question, are they going to do a one-time burn or they're going to burn daily?
It will not be a burn daily, I know that. I think it will be limited periods of time when they have large amounts of material to burn in a concentrated fashion, not a burn a little bit every day because that's not efficient.
Desire would be as many, as few burns as possible.
As few burns for as long as possible.
As quick as possible.
Not long, yeah, quick.
As long as possible. Quick as possible.
Just as long as needed.
Please, we're going in the wrong direction. So, we...
Do they not have means of like a shredder or anything over there to, to shred this material?
They do not have a shredder now and I just know the burning is the preferred method that they would like to use to dispose of the material.
Good point.
I'm just trying to think of, get a little more clarification with some of those things. I think the timeframe is something really important to nail down because, um, like Mr. Smith said, with, with the summer months coming and how still the air could be, I mean, if this is a few-day-long burn, it could just, you know, smoke everybody out.
The air quality of that condensed and populated area could not be very favorable.
Well, with the, you said it's going to be wet though and you don't know the, how wet it's going to be.
Oh, the burned material will not be wet. The soil that's spread is the only thing that's going to be wet. No, they will not be burning that material when it is wet. They would burn it when it is dry to...
And Don, do I, i- is there certain things that cannot be burned that is aware and it's required and everyone's...
Absolutely. Walmart has certain...
Full understanding.
Anything that's not material that can be burned in terms of wood or brush, Walmart requires be removed from the site. Any other substances that's part of the contract with Walmart, they cannot.
Not to the spoil site though?
Correct. Not to the spoil site, has to be taken to a proper landfill or waste disposal site or transfer station. Walmart's very strict about those materials and the contract calls for them.
The requirement of the, the blower system actually cuts down on, on some of the smoke. It's not as, as bad because it does burn quicker. So, it, I'm not saying it's going to completely do away with it, but it, it will help cut down on some of that.
But, we have something in the contract or something in the regulations of the city of things that can't be burnt, piles of tires and things of that nature. So, that would be...
Yes, that's understood.
Obligation on your part not to. That would be my concern.
Don, do you have the, the resources to put our building inspector there at the point where he can tell us, this is, this is enough material, the pit is full, it's time to do it? And have some city oversight that they have the maximum amount of material to go, they do that, clear the, some more of the site, do the same thing so that we have some oversight that the maximum amount of material for the minimum amount of time would be disposed of? Is that something that within, something we could do?
When we draft our, um, contract development agreement with them, uh, we can require them, um, to, um, report to us, um, when they're going to make, when they're going to do the burns, um, so we can have somebody, um, out there on site, um, to make sure that, you know, we're not overpowering with, you know, fumes and smoke and stuff. Try to keep it, you know, as, as best as we possibly can during the burn.
But, you're also required to call the state fire marshal and get a burn permit through the local authorities as part of you checking in, you're about to light the fire.
Yes.
The burn pit covers the act itself, but not the timing of the act.
Correct.
So, what we're looking for are to be able to put it down a little tighter and say, we want some control on the timing of the event so that, again, we get the maximum amount for the least amount of time to process it.
Seems like that would be appropriate for the pre-con, for that agreement, the development agreement.
Or, that's a very good point, Mayor. You know, um, I put out John Bledsoe as our building inspector because that was, but, um, and I don't want to talk for the chief of the fire department, but that may be somebody else to consider, uh, because it could ultimately maybe be his issue. But, I'd like, you know, I think the city could determine who would be the best person to talk to.
Well, when we, when we, um, schedule the, the pre-con, we'll invite the fire chief to that meeting, uh, so we can discuss, um, that issue at that time.
Okay, so we have, uh, in terms of the spoils, we are going to have an as-built on the contours of the final print. Under the burn pit, we will have blowers that will be ba- the amount of burning will be based on volume that will be overseen with the, some type of person from the city be able to determine when is the best time to be able to do that process for the minimal impact of the city. Are there any other...
The only thing I would say is you just need to be careful with it because if you're going to do minimal impact, it's going to have to be during the week when most people not at home, outside, playing, the park's not full, things of this nature right here, going over toward the rec center where there's thousands of people that, I mean, it just, that would be a recognition, I would try to make that it be done during the week.
Absolutely.
Less outside exposure to the public.
Or even on third shift when you're, you know, you have the coolest part of the day, the least amount of, you know, the least amount of air movement. That's a, I'm not by any means suggesting that, but that there's some things to think about. What we're trying to accomplish at this board is the minimal impact on the city from the burn. If we wish to have the burn. So, are those added to the motion? Do we need a second to add that? Could I get a second to add that? Okay, we have a second. So, I'd like to vote on the amendment of adding this particulars to the first motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we'd like to, uh, have a vote on the original motion to approve the grading plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8.3 is discuss interaction on a rezoning application to amend the approved master development plan for Fairview Historical Village, map 69, parcel 62.00, 3.54 acres, zone HOD, City of Fairview owner.
Motion for approval.
Second. Got a second? Any, uh, engineering comments?
There are no engineering comments, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question though.
Do we have anybody from the historical commission here to answer questions? Okay, Mr. Cantrell, we've got, uh, city owns the property. Historical commission wishes us to take a look at this, uh, master development plan. No one is here from the master development plan, folks. How do we proceed?
Now, this is, I, I just, may I have the floor, Chairman?
Sure.
You asked him a question, but I want to just say that that is not the historical's position or place. It is the city that is looking to address the master plan that has nailed down names. And when this originally came out of workshop, it was to say the easiest way to have alterations with the current way it reads as the master plan. And it was suggested in workshop that we take the names off of the specific building envelopes to allow flexibility for the city as they move forward on this project. Yes, they have an interest of alterations, but it is the city's decision of what does or does not go on the building envelopes on this PUD.
If it's the city's plan, then you won't need anybody here from the historical commission.
Okay.
If it was the historical commission's plan, you'd have to like to do everybody else, you'd have to defer it to someone.
Okay, so this is a, this is a city entity.
This is a city entity plan.
Not a private entity that is looking to do this work.
Well, actual people doing the work is a private entity.
Of the request for the, for the change.
But, the changes...
Is it a vehicle for the city, the private entity?
Yes.
Ultimately, the city controls the private entity?
No.
Through funding?
The city don't control the private...
You allow them on the property for project process.
The city does not control the private entity.
But, you allow them on the project.
That was a poor question. The question should be, does the private entity receive funding from the city and would that control the development?
Not total funding.
Not fully?
The city funds its projects and they have volunteers or vendors that do the work contracted by the city, paid by the city, approved by the city.
The private entity could not put a building out there without the city's approval because the city owns the property.
They have influence, they have discussion, they have input without a doubt, but they don't have authority.
Well, the leap here is that we are asked, we as the planning commission are being asked to approve this with no labels on this plan. And the only redeeming thing I see is that it is a city-owned piece of property, but we are eliminating any planning control by approving this plan because we do, we have a building envelope, but we do not have any, any issue when it comes to what goes inside that building envelope.
Yes, we do.
The, one concern I have is in, in a typical, um, PUD situation, um, the master development plan calls out for, for everything in detail what's going to happen. The board of commissioners approves the rezoning of the property to whatever this master development plan is. In general, the developer comes back and when he gets ready to build a building, just submits a site plan to the planning commission and the planning commission approves the site plan. It don't go to the board of commissioners after, after that. So, what, the process is if the historic commission comes in to present a site plan for any one of these buildings and it meets our zoning requirements, the, the planning commission can't turn down the site plan, it has to approve it. But, it may not be what the board of commissioners wants built on the site.
What authority does the historical society have to, to decide what goes on that property?
Because they've been given that authority in an assumption that they can do what they want to on the property.
Well, that's incorrect.
And I've got, I've got the historical commission coming to me saying, this is what we're going to do. Okay? So, that's where I have a disconnect with trying to do what the city wants to do and then trying to do what the historic commission wants to do, which is a private entity, don't have anything to do with the city. If, if there wasn't a third party into this, having those buildings unlabeled really don't make a difference because the board of commissioners is going to say everything, this is what we're going to do. But, just by implication that, that historic commission has been given the authority to do things and actually the permits are issued to that entity, not to the City of Fairview.
But, the permits are issued to contractors within, within that entity, just as if the city would have contracted those individuals.
But, the city has not contracted with anybody.
But, we've approved it.
The historic commission that has been doing it.
But, we've approved it through the engineering and everything, correct? And we have final approval on what goes on there?
That's what I've been trying to get under control for the last three or four years.
And we've come a million miles in the last 12 months.
And I don't, I don't want to veer from that in any way by making changes to this that could make that go awry somewhere.
The request for this came from the city.
Yeah.
And it's simply to change the names.
Well, the request that I got came from the historic commission.
But, the city has met and requested this, this change.
And so, what, what's before you is what I got from the historic commission. I didn't necessarily get it from any of the commissioners.
The only change to the original plan in this right here, correct me if I'm wrong, is the names on the structures.
The names on the structure...
That's so that they wouldn't be individualized and we could move forward without having to go through...
The names on the structures were changed, the size of the structures were changed and then, um, the building up here next to the phase one where the detention pond was added. They didn't, they didn't move it, they just added another building up there.
But, we renamed that one building that was up there to be used for something else. Without a name on it this time, it could be designated as something else.
What I, what I really need is a mechanism for when the historic commission comes in to get a building permit or to submit a site plan to, to place a building somewhere on this site, that the board of commissioners is going to see it because in reality, the way we deal with it, they never see a site plan. So...
It's our responsibility.
But, Mayor, this question for you, the city attorney. And I'm not arguing the point because we work, we've been working very well together for quite some time. What, where's the authority come from in this back for the, the historical society? Does or does not the final authority for any of this rest with the city or the board commissioners?
Not really because what you've got is a PUD there and what Don is saying, I, I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is you've got a, a group of buildings now that's showing blank. And if the historical society comes in and says, up in blank building A, we're going to make that a whatever.
Who gives them the authority to do that?
In the, uh, agreement of the, the PUD.
It gives the historical side the final decision on what to put where?
Well, if it's a normal PUD, it would. I haven't...
We've already got the PUD sitting there, we know what's going to go there or what's going to change.
Yeah, the zoning itself in, in the PUD gives the, the entity that's in charge that, that authority to, to develop what's there.
Let me give an example. I have an old cabin and I want to put it on that historical spot. I'm coming to the city wanting to work with them in a project. That's how they are. They don't have authority unless it's been given to them or it's given to them in a case by case. So, in this, however we come out on what you're saying, they don't have the authority to say, I'm putting this 1880 cabin tomorrow, it's being delivered. They don't have that authority without the city giving them the go-ahead or the city saying, we need a permit to place that project on that building envelope and the permit is being pulled by the City of Fairview and we're contracting after bid, a contractor to do that job.
What I'm telling you that has gotten it to where it is, that when this is approved with, with no names on it and they get ready to place a building somewhere on this site, I'm going to tell them they've got to submit a site plan. Either they are going to have to pay for that site plan to be, uh, drawn up or the city's going to have to pay for the site plan. If the city draws up the site plan, then yeah, the city's in the loop. But, if they draw up the site plan, submit it and bring it to my office, they're going to tell me that they want that on the agenda. And when I tell them they can't until the board says so.
That doesn't put you in a very good position.
Yes.
Understand.
You're trying to do your job and yet the people that you're doing your job for are paying you and they're asking you to make a decision outside of the standard procedure that you go through on every other master development plan.
Could you, you could, could you not put on the, uh, when you do the, the zoning, I mean, this is going to be a different... I mean, this is going to be different from a, a normal type of PUD thing, because you've got a different situation. Normally, the city is not a participant per se in the development itself. You've got, somebody comes in, citizen A comes in, wants a PUD, gets the zoning approved, uh, that PUD is his zoning, but the city doesn't have anything to do with the actual development of it. Could we not put on the, on the drawing itself when you're, when the, the recommendation goes up to the board that when they rezone this, that it says on the drawing itself that no buildings will be constructed without the approval of, of the board of commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee? Whomever that may be. I mean, you know, boards come and go, city attorneys come and go. But if they change the drawing, then that's changing the zoning. If someone takes something off of it, it's going to have to come back to this planning commission for a recommendation to the board of commissioners. We just add a, a statement to the, to, to, says it has, you know, you've got the blank buildings, but it has a statement in big bold letters that says, any building that is to be added, uh, pursuant to this, uh, PUD, shall have the prior approval of the board of commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Then when they come in and, and do that, you've got to send it up to the board. And that gets him off the hook and, and puts a, no, no disrespect to the board of commissioners, but puts the hook where it should be.
I'm making an amendment.
The people paying the bill.
Yeah.
I'm going to make amendment to the motion as stated by the city attorney to be addressed on the plan.
Second.
That's a little unique. You won't see that on most PUDs, but this is a little bit of a unique situation.
It would be specific to this master development plan.
Yeah, I had a professor once that says, unique situations, call for thinking out of the box, so we think out of the box.
Okay. Are you okay with that? Okay. The only other thing I can think of is that because we, at that point, we will not see, the planning commission will not see a site plan. If this gets approved as amended, that it is up to the board of commissioners then to approve any building on the site coming to us.
Let's see, come to the planning commission for a recommendation.
We, yeah, we could defer it back to the planning commission.
Planning commission for a recommendation.
Can defer it back?
Or you can put on...
Would you be so kind?
Absolutely.
Well, you could put it on the drawing and required...
Planning commission for a recommendation.
And then the board, and approve, be submitted to the planning commission for recommendation to the board of commissioners.
And that was my motion, as you stated it earlier, to have the planning commission make a recommendation to the board of commissioners upon any and all presented structures.
And put that on the drawing, and everybody's off the hook with the board of commissioners.
That sounds like a good plan.
Could we restate that in one chunk?
We had a motion for, which way?
Oh, what I said was that, that we put on the, on the, uh, uh, the PUD drawing, a statement that says, and it's going to show, you know, it already shows the blank blocks, but it says that any, uh, additions to the PUD, uh, will be, any plans will be presented to the planning commission for recommendation, uh, to the board of commissioners for final approval. That way, everybody that needs to see it will get to see it, and Don don't have to sit down there and say, well, do I show this to the planning commission? Do I show it to the board of commissioners? Do I hide it somewhere? Hope it goes away.
I lock myself in my closet.
It won't hide long, because I promise you they're going to ask for some money from the board.
Yes, they will. Yes, they will. If the board of commissioners will work with the planning commission, I think that everybody will have enough oversight on the project that it's going to come out great by the time we're there.
And I truly don't have a cabin, I'm donated.
So we have a motion, we have an amendment to the motion. Uh, as stated, so I need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have the original motion to approve the, uh, master development plan as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.1, we have...
Should we have voted on the first one if we had an amendment that changed the first one?
We had to amend it first, and then...
As amended, stated, thank you.
Item 9.1 is to, um, excuse me, communication and information from the planning zoning codes department.
I apologize for, um, forgetting the, uh, workshop that we were supposed to have at 5:30 tonight, uh, for the, uh, land use, proposed land use map. Uh, we will have that meeting, um, next month, and it will be at 5 o'clock to 7 o'clock, uh, to discuss the land use plan.
That's July the 9th?
Yes.
Okay. City engineer isn't here tonight. Uh, any communication from the city attorney?
I'd just like to, uh, thank the planning commission for, uh, going along with, with me and allowing the lady to make her statement tonight. Uh, you'll find that, that I'll always lean over backwards, even if it takes up some of my time and some of your time. Uh, you always want a person to have that opportunity to be heard. I think that's one of the great things about America, is that we all have our opportunity to be heard. We don't always get the result we want, but we have the opportunity to be heard, and I think the board will, will go along with me on that.
Thank you. Fisher Sutton?
I really don't have anything tonight. I was asked to let, remind everybody there's going to be a breakfast, a full country hen breakfast at the Masonic Lodge over, uh, over in Fairview, which is right there to entrance to the Bowie Park. Uh, it's one of their biggest benefits of the year. So please, Saturday morning, starts at 7 o'clock, I think it runs to 10 o'clock. Uh, please go by and enjoy a good, good breakfast for 7, but you can't be anywhere. Thank you.
Commissioner Biata?
Um, I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Benson, Vice Chairman Benson, excuse me.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Biata?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Lishell? Mayor Tati?
Nothing, thank you.
I have nothing tonight, so at 8:02, we are adjourned. Sorry, so we asked for a motion on that.
Did you ask for a motion?
Now, motion, second?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, folks, we're all tired tonight.
All in favor, aye.